Good morning. Nine o'clock. So we're gonna call this meeting order and welcome everybody to our February of 2024 meeting, regular meeting of the county council. At this time, I'll call on Councilman Rivers for our morning opening prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ask you to pray with me, please. Lord, we pause now to give you thanks for this beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity we have to gather together and do the business of this council for us today. Thank you for each council member present, and we especially pray for those that are not with us. Mr. Miller's not, not doing well, and we ask that you just take your heat in hand and, and make him well. Lord, thank you for all of our employees and the job that they do, providing the goods and services to our citizens. Lord, as we discuss the business before us today, we ask that you give us the wisdom to make the right choices, and we pray that everything that we say and do will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. Lord, when we have concluded the business before us today, we ask you give us safe passage back to our respective homes. Give us safe passage throughout the rest of the week. Lord, forgive us of our many shortcomings. All these things we ask in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance in flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the ideal liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Rivers. This time, we need to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Conklin, second by Mr. Smallwood, is any discussion?
Discussion, I think there is a need to amend the agenda on my paperwork. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I looked at this yesterday, and although the actual agenda doesn't have to be amended on one of the items, and that would be twelve, uh, that would be twelve B, surplus property for Sheriff's Department, some vehicles. In the memo for that agenda item, there are two vehicles that were left off, those being a 2015 Ford Explorer and a 2014 Ford F-150 four by four. Although the agenda doesn't have to be amended, there doesn't have to be a finding of agent circumstances for purposes of clarification, and so the minutes are properly reflect that, those two vehicles will need to be added to that surplus property when we get to that item.
Thank you, sir. Okay. With that, with the addition of that, do I have, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, agenda is adopted. If there are no corrections or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our January the third meeting.
So moved.
Ms. Burns has made a motion, Mr. Conklin second, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, I think the bonds authorizations are being passed for signing. We'll move down to appointments. Mr. Jack Hurst. Good morning.
Morning, sir. And everyone, I know all of y'all, y'all probably don't know me, but I know everyone of you.
I think everybody knows each other.
I know this guy when he was a kid. Uh, it ain't, the issue is just the principle that I can't get to my property.
I'm gonna show y'all a map. Thank you, Chair. Glad to see you, sir. Good to see you, thank you. How you doing?
I'm not above paying far dues. I'm paying them on eight different properties. This particular one is where the solar farm's at. There's wetland on the bottom, the liripon's on behind me. Fire trucks, no one can get to that property. And that, that's, that's my issue. I just, nobody can get to it. And you probably don't know, but before the solar farm came in, we got six hundred acres out there. Taxed us roughly a thousand dollars. Now y'all getting twenty-one thousand dollars a year off this property. Oh, one hundred and twenty thousand for twenty years, and that, that's, that's the only problem I got.
Question? Question if I may. Mr. Hurst, is, is that particular parcel right there fenced off?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is fenced off?
They got an eight-foot fence around all the property.
Even though that what they can't use?
And if you look, mine's in red. This belongs to somebody else, this belongs to somebody else, and this belongs to somebody else.
Okay, but your property is, even though they're not using it, is fenced off and you can't get to it?
I can't get to it. There's no roads. Don't want to get to it, just cross that concrete.
Was there easement or anything signed?
No. It's, it's, it's wetland on both sides, well, on, on three sides.
They didn't want it?
They couldn't use the wetland.
Gotcha. I don't quite understand it, but, uh, maybe we could go back and talk to those folks and, uh, see if we can get that resolved. Uh, I've got a meeting with the fire chief this coming week, probably Thursday or Friday.
But I'm gonna go back and tell you this, when the solar people first come out and started working, they contacted the fire department here. Said, if you ever get a call, there's a fire in the solar farm, don't come out there. You can't put it out with water. I don't know.
I don't know either. Okay, all right, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Hurst. We will see that this concern is passed on to the appropriate department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to item number seven, public comments. Before we ask for the public comments, while we welcome all comments, public comments should be limited to four minutes per speaker or twenty minutes per subject. Is anyone that wish to address council this morning? Okay, hearing, seeing the one, we'll move down to item eight, public hearings on the project furnace fee in lieu of, um, is there a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Ms. Burns, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now open. Is anyone that wish to address council on this ordinance? No one wish to address council, I assume the same two will make the motion as second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now closed. We'll move down to item nine A, uh, project furnace fee in lieu of ordinance, the third reading. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Ms. Anderson made a motion, Mr. Conklin second, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Lear, would you like to make a comment on this project?
I'm first going to read you all a statement that ATI worked on with us, and then I'll tell you a little bit. Um, ATI is a global producer of high-performance materials and solutions for the aerospace and defense, A and D markets, and critical applications in electronics, medical, and specialty energy. In the Carolinas, ATI is a recognized leader in advanced material melting, processing, and development. With established operations in Monroe and Bay Cruz, North Carolina, and Richburg, South Carolina, ATI has been a proud member of the region for more than sixty years. ATI produces the highest quality alloys in the industry, including advanced titanium, nickel, and powder alloys that empower its customers' most critical applications. The company's new operation in Page land, South Carolina, will extend ATI's industry leadership as it seeks to become a full-service provider in aerospace industry. This A and D Materials Manufacturing Operation will create fifty-seven new highly skilled jobs, and ATI will invest sixty-four million dollars in this project. So this is Project Furnace that we've been hearing about for quite a while. It's an exciting day to be here now that we've had third reading. Um, we will not be making a public announcement at this time. We'll do that later when they are getting ready to move into their building. It's been about fifteen or sixteen months since we had the site visit, and I met these two gentlemen, uh, that day, and since then, I have worked closely with Caleb Funkhauser, their director, uh, their strategy, Director of Strategic Initiative, um, and David Berry, the Senior Director of Technology. So, um, I think that we all know this, we've discussed this. These are gonna be good jobs, they're highly skilled jobs, and they're paying well above the county average, so we're very excited about this moving forward. I'm going to have Caleb come up and read a statement, and if you all have questions or anything, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of ATI, we just wanna say thank you to the county of Chesterfield for making this possible and bringing ATI to Page land. So we're an industry leader in aerospace and defense materials. There's a saying around ATI that we take a lot of pride in, that you can't fly without ATI. If you look up in the sky, virtually any aircraft that you see will have materials produced right around here from the Carolinas and some of our other ATI sites. Um, the materials, you know, the facility that we'll be bringing to Page land is an important, um, addition to our portfolio in aerospace and defense materials, and we look forward to being an important part of the county of Chesterfield as we grow in this area.
Glad to have you.
Yes.
We really appreciate what y'all bring into the community.
We welcome y'all to Chesterfield County and look forward to this relationship. Thank you very much. We'll move down to item nine B, lease purchase ordinance for a roll-off truck and a brush cutter. This is the second reading. Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
We move.
Mr. Curtis, motion, Mr. Conklin second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We move down to item nine C, standing rules ordinance, second reading. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Ms. Anderson?
Second.
Ms. Burns? Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, move down to item nine D, emergency ordinance declaring temporary moratorium on issuance of permits of establishments for mobile homes and parks, subdivision. Is there a motion on that? Mr. Conklin? Mr. Ford, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move down to item nine E, ordinance granting temporary ease, or granting easement to Dominion Energy. This is at the Lynch River site in Page land. Is there a motion for that? Mr. Ford made a motion, Mr. Conklin second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Standing committee reports, we have none. Uh, item eleven, um, Mr. Smallwood.
Mr. Chairman, council, thank you for letting me speak to you this morning. Um, recording county business for committee meetings. I'll try to stick to my notes here and be a little brief, because I, I like to talk freely, but I don't want you to have to sit here for thirty minutes and listen to me. Um, we looked at this early last year, and by a very narrow margin, it was decided not to move forward with it at that time. Um, that, I felt that was unfortunate, but after that, it was, the meeting started being put out on a different platform, and now we've had several months, probably close to a year, to evaluate that. Um, I've been looking at it pretty hard, and I thought because of that, and what I've come to the conclusion of is this, this is the right time to revisit it. I feel like we're getting into committee, committee, committee meeting season with the finance committee meeting and things like that. Um, so I'd like to revisit it now. Um, I'd like to open it up as a discussion. As we discuss it, before we do that, I'd like to make about four points of why I think we need to do it now, but I'd like us to discuss what we're actually doing. And there's a lot of talk when you start recording meetings and putting them out there for the public and what you're actually doing, but to me, we're just providing access to the people to hear the information that we're discussing on their behalf, the people that allowed us to be here. Um, to me, that's important. Um, so I'll give you four reasons why I think we ought to do it now that I've kind of been thinking about, and then I'll be quiet, and I'd, I'd love to hear your feedback and conversations about it before I make a motion. Um, number one, it's already being done. I think we, I mentioned just a second ago, everybody knows we already have a platform out there that's, that's, I think we can all agree, there's probably less than ideal, but it seemed like at the time the only way to get it out there. Um, I, I think we can do better, which leads me to number two. It, it's good for our constituents and the citizens of this county. They have access to the information in a better quality platform than what we're actually being able to give them right now, and I think it's our responsibility to do that. Um, I, I think it, it's just, it's good for them to have the opportunity if they choose to take it. The third reason I have is probably one we don't talk about a whole lot, because I think a lot of times, everybody sitting at this table is a little bit afraid to talk about what's good for us, but I think this is good for us. Um, it, it's good for us, in my opinion, because number one, it gives us the opportunity to share with our, with our constituents and the citizens. That's, there's nothing wrong with that, there's no bad that you can find in that. The, the other thing is, I feel like the way we're doing it now is a little bit of a distraction to me, and it gives us a chance to remove that distraction, but still get the information out to the public. The third reason for me to think it's good for us is we're not all on every committee. We do the best we can to be to, at as many committee meetings as possible. I miss some, I have a job, and I would like the opportunity to go back and hit a button and push play and virtually be there and hear everything that was going to be brought to general counsel at a later date and be up to speed on it. Just because I missed the meeting doesn't mean I should have to make forty phone calls to get in, access to that information. The fourth reason I'll give you for why I think we need to do it now is probably one of the biggest, and to me, it allows us to move forward and get past allowing this to be a topic of conversation. I have conversations with people in the community weekly about this, maybe not multiple every week, but it comes up about every week. Somebody says, hey, when you guys gonna start recording your, your other meetings beside the regular council meeting? Soon, hopefully, soon. Um, I, I don't know how many people have those same conversations, but I do. Um, for me, I'll close my opening comment with this, on this, with one last thing, and that's, it's not just about transparency. It truly is to me about giving access of information to our constituents and being available. We're being available as we do the work the citizens ask us to do. With that, I, that's all I really have to say about it. I'd, I'd love to hear comments and feedback.
Well, if you make a motion and we get a second, then we can enter into discussion.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion at this time that we move forward with, as of today, with doing whatever's required to start recording the committee meetings for Chesterfield County.
Can we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is any discussion?
What are you thinking in terms of, uh, making it accessible, like within a certain timeframe? Because I do agree that council members need to have an opportunity to see it so we're aware of what's going on before it goes out to constituents so that we can answer questions. I wouldn't be okay with it being, you know, same day, but...
No, and, and I think that's a good question. The thoughts that I've had on it were, I think forty-eight to seventy-two hours is a fair amount of time. Because we aren't all available to be at every single committee meeting, we do need time to be brought up to speed before we start fielding phone calls. Now, how often does that happen? I don't know, but if it happens once, it's unfortunate, right? But I think forty-eight to seventy-two hours seems like a fair term, but I'm open on that. I don't, I don't know what your thoughts are.
What about staff? What's the turnaround time? What would be reasonable for staff?
I don't wanna speak for IT, but I think, I mean, he, once it's done, I mean, it's a matter of, I mean, he can make it happen as quick as y'all want it to happen.
If he's here, but if he's not here, so...
If he's not here, we got a problem. We got, we got to find somebody to...
So I don't wanna say within, I want it to be within a reasonable, I mean, surely he would have somebody trained to do it if there's a long-term absence, but...
That's correct.
I, I agree with, I mean, whatever, I'm, I'm, I'm good with anything that's a fair timeframe for staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I just think it needs to be made available. I would love to see it be emailed to council members that weren't present before it's posted. Give us a chance to look at it and be brought up to speed before we have to answer those questions, because it, it's not fair to get calls about something you don't have any knowledge of. That's, I agree with that.
With the council meetings, y'all give him till Friday, give IT till Friday to have it online. Lot of days, he has it online before end of day.
I guess because committee meetings can be on various days, just depending on, you know, our schedules, so I don't, I hate to say a Friday or the, unless we say. I don't wanna make it too complicated.
However, we need to phrase it, I, I'm, I'm good with that part of it. If we can phrase it that within seventy-two hours or forty-eight hours, provided staff is available. If some, if two people are on vacation, that's going to be hard, and you don't wanna get called on the carpet because somebody took some time off and nobody else is capable of doing it. I, I get that, so however, if I need to rephrase that some other way, I'd be glad to.
I don't think, I don't think forty-eight hours is enough time.
I don't either. I mean, just in case.
Sure. Well, if we have a committee meeting on a Monday, and somebody's on vacation till, through Friday, it might very well be the following Monday, but I mean, do we need to make it five business days, one week from the, the time of the meeting? Because most people aren't gonna take vacation for over a week.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I'd say that. I mean, that's just my personal, I would be okay with that.
Does that seem like for staff, from a staff standpoint, does that seem okay? Okay, so I need to rephrase the motion at this point, and I would like to make a motion that we move forward with video recording of committee meetings, uh, to be posted on the website within five business days?
Because, I mean, to be clear for everybody else, they're always recorded. They're just not recorded by video, so people would have access to that information sooner than, so five business days for, for a video recording is, I'm good with that.
So we need a second on this.
A second, that's what she was saying.
Motion is second.
Mr. Chair, I move it. We postpone, um, voting on this motion until we have time to gather more information, particularly about the personnel.
Personnel. Okay, so we have a motion to postpone. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of postponing this till we gather more information? They be known by a sign of aye?
Aye.
So we have, raise your hand. We have two. Okay, so that motion is defeated. Okay, so we'll go back to the original motion. Is any more discussion on it? All those in favors?
Why can't the company actually, all their constituents, why can't they come to the meetings? It's open to the public, it's been open to the public, and that would end all of this. Just put it in the paper.
We're having committee meeting this day at this time. Come in.
Unfortunately, not everybody has all day off.
True.
I struggle to get to all the committee meetings myself, and I'm very interested in investing. Um, I, I think that if we're gonna use that as a reason not to record it, then we need to have these committee meetings at six o'clock at night. If, if we won't have that discussion, I'm more than willing to have that discussion. I've got time at six o'clock at night. Is that something we, do we need to table this other and go down that road?
We've ordered defeated a motion.
Okay, I just don't think that's a, a logical argument for this.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Smallwood's motion, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries.
Abstained.
Okay. Okay. We'll move down to item twelve A, surplus property on Sheriff's Department computers. Ms. Stanley?
Thank you. Um, the Sheriff's Department had given us a list, and I think you have it in your packet, of a bunch of computers that pretty much is obsolete, and they've removed everything they can off of them to build new computers, and at this time, that they would like to declare them surplus or request council to declare them surplus.
Okay, is there a motion to declare this a surplus?
We move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll move down to item twelve B, surplus property, the vehicles, um, is requested it declared, did, we declare this as a surplus? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Smallwood, any discussion?
Question. Mr. Eubanks, did you get your question answered that you had about, uh, this particular issue?
That's correct. We did, and it's...
To your satisfaction.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um, twelve C, surplus property, public works, Ms. Stanley?
Okay, um, there's four items listed from the road department that they have requested that council declare them surplus, and these monies, once they sell them, will go back into the capital equipment.
Okay, is there a motion to declare these items surplus?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Burns, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve D, surplus public, public works, backhoe, Mr. Eubanks?
Yes, I've been approached by one of the municipalities about purchasing our backhoe. It's a two thousand eighteen Caterpillar, and in years past, we've had equipment come up that some of the towns have been interested in, and what we've done in those cases is put it out for bid to the, all the municipalities within our county, and I'm asking y'all for the sake of the municipalities to give them a options of, of purchasing... to give them a, options of purchasing a pretty decent backhoe that y'all allow us to do that, to put out for bid to the municipalities within the county, our two thousand eighteen backhoe. Now, I say that to say this. And when we got our new backhoe, Caterpillar gave a, gave us a trade-in value on the backhoe. So I know that number, and I felt like that number was a little bit low for us, so I chose to keep it and was going to sell it outright. So that being the case, uh, I feel like we probably need to have some type of reserve on some of the equipment also, so... But if it's okay with y'all, I would like to put that out for bid to the towns and hopefully have a bid back by next council meeting.
So that reserve will be what Caterpillar initially offered, right?
I would say at least what Caterpillar has offered us to trade in for that.
This is not the first time we've done this successfully.
No, so we've done that with equipment in years past.
And ended up with a machine.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion declared out of surplus.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Curtis, second by Mr. Smallwood. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by a sign of I?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, move down to item twelve E, the bridge on Elmo McFarland Road. Mr. Eubanks?
This is, yeah, this is just to bring y'all up to date where we stand there. I know this is in, I think, Ms. Burns's district. We had to close off a road, Elmo McFarland Road, because the state, they do our inspections on our bridges and they deemed it unsafe. What we're trying to do in the meantime is find an outfit to come in and do the repair to get this road back open. And it has been real difficult finding someone to come in and do the bridge outfits or do this smaller job. So we are, we've got one price in so far, and we're trying to get two more so I can move on with this project. But we are moving as fast as we can, Ms. Burns.
Question. Mr. Eubanks, is this one not, uh, reasonable to take the bridge out and put piping in? Is it one of those jobs that...
I, I told one of the, I told one of the council members, we've, we've had a lot of wooden bridges and bridges throughout the county in the years that I've been here, and every time they'd give a problem, I would jerk them out and stick culverts in and, and do it. But this one here, with the width and the depth of this, it is, we've actually got a price from an outfit to do culverts, because it was too big a job. And y'all, y'all don't want to hear those prices. That's, that's all.
We'll move down to item twelve F, South Carolina Power Team Grant Award. Ms. Lear, would you like to address that?
I would love to address that. Council, we at the Economic Development Office are here today just with all good things. We're not asking for anything today. Uh, South Carolina Power Team is the Economic Development Organization for all of the electric co-ops in the state. There are twenty of those. Lynch's River Electric Co-op, uh, told us about a grant that South Carolina Power Team offered, and they helped us present, um, present our grant to the power team. They have awarded us with one million dollars. And we, this is all going to go to Lynch's River Industrial Park. It's going to provide the first section, phase one, of water. So I know that ATI is happy to hear that. Uh, that is already started. That's just now starting. That's in motion. And it also will help us complete the road all the way through the park. So it will open up other lots there. I do want to say that Cherry McCoy did this paperwork for the grant. She pulled all this together. It was back in, I think, October of last year. And Courtney Hicks-Hare in my office worked with Cherry to get all this combined, to be able to present to them. Power Team wanted to be here today, uh, to be up here with us, but they could not make it. So I just wanted to make sure that we express our huge gratitude for what they've done. And coming before you to ask you all if we can accept this. I don't know what has to happen to do that, but...
You've handled that part. We'll handle this part.
I don't think we're going to turn it down.
I did want, one other thing I wanted to mention. Jamie Frost really went to bat for us. He works with Power Team. I know Mr. Eubanks has worked with him before. We appreciate that. We had a meeting at Lynch's River Electric Offices, and he and some of his staff were there, and they had their site selection group with them, and we presented the, the needs to them. And I also wanted to mention Alliance Consulting Engineers. And I know you all are familiar with DePaul, Ilya Tombe, and Steve Whaley. They really went to bat for us too in working with Power Team on the more technical engineering type things. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We need a motion to accept this grant award from South Carolina Power Team?
So moved.
Yeah, everybody wants to vote, so is any discussion? Here none, all in favor, signify by a sign of I?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Lear, we'd like to thank you and your staff, along with the Power Team and Alliance, for helping, everybody concerned for helping us out with this grant. That's great. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to send them a letter of appreciation.
I'm sure we can have a laugh.
He's not going to take no hole back out of this, is he?
Okay, we'll move down to item fourteen. New businesses, none. We'll move down to fifteen, the board appointments. Get down to Mr. Eubanks, the administrator's report.
Got one thing on the grant deal. Just yesterday, we received a, a brand-new bookmobile coming into Chesterfield County. That book was, I mean, it is very nice. Hopefully, they're going to have a ribbon cutting for it and everything here in the near future, so... But I'm telling you, it was a very nice thing that we've got on hand now. So just want to bring y'all up to date on that. That's all.
Okay, move down to council member comments. Anyone have any comments?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, well, I just wanted to remind everybody about the Sandblast Road Rally the first weekend in March, which will be before our next meeting. And then some of us are going to go to the County Connect Conference, uh, where we meet with our delegation. If there's anything that you want us to bring up with them, just, Ms. Burns is going, I'm going. Mr. Conklin, are you going? I'm not sure who else is going for classes, Mr. Smallwood. Anyway, that's a great time for us to advocate for our county. So if there's anything specific that we need to meet with our delegation about, I'd appreciate, um, any of that ahead of time. And then we do have a planning, um, meeting. It's the last Thursday of the month, and it's going to be here. It's not my meeting, it's with the, um, with our... Comprehensive plan meeting, yeah. And remember that Joseph has the QR code, so if you have social media and want to share those for our constituents to give feedback regarding, you know, how, how they see the county moving forward, or if they want to be contributors with that, um, that QR code's a real easy way to give feedback. And I have it too, if anybody else wants it.
I'd like to say, uh, Ms. Lear, I, I really appreciate you bringing something to the table that we can all agree on for once unanimously. Yes, yes, please, please bring some more of those when you come. Uh, also, just short, um, I, I want to appreciate, um, I want to say how much I appreciate Mr. Smallwood and, um, Ms. Anderson for taking initiative to revisit, um, the recording of the meetings. I think it's important to a lot of people, and I think it's a step in the right direction. And I really appreciate, I really appreciate moving forward and, and let's, let's conduct business. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have any comment? The link, newspaper would like for county council folks to have a picture made. I suggest we do that before we go into executive session. So please, we'll gather up in the corner over there for these folks. But there is a need to go into executive session. Mr. Ruffin, would you please explain?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two items. One is pursuant to Code Section thirty-four dash seventy, subsection A-one. That is for discussion of employment appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of employees. And then also pursuant, uh, to Code Section thirty-four dash seventy, subsection A-two. That is for negotiations instant to propose contractual arrangements, uh, and also the receipt of legal advice that would be attorney-client privilege regarding the following matter, and that is potential locations for a new detention center. And as noted on the agenda, council may take action on both or either of these items after exiting executive session.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
We want to get those pictures done first.
Well, we're going, we'll do that when we take off. Motion by Mr. Smallwood, second by Mr. Conklin. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a sign of I? All opposed? Motion carries. We will take a ten-minute break before we go into executive session.
motion carries. We're back in regular session and while we in executive session, no motion were made and no votes were taken. After each executive session, I would like to ask the building committee to undertake studying with Mr. Eubanks on selecting a site for potential for the detention center. Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, just for the purpose of the minutes, under item 18B which was discussion of potential locations for the detention center, Mr. Curtis recused himself from all discussion of that matter as he has an interest in one of the potential sites and upon recusing himself, he absented himself from the meeting and left the building.
Thank you very much for adding that. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.